Yeah, we're back. Oh. Our pledge of allegiance and invocation by Pastor Alonso Mulberry. Could you come forward at this time, sir? Will everyone please stand?
Pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. To the Republic which is stand.
One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you once again for allowing us to come together. We thank you for your goodness all day long. Thank you for how good you've been. Father, we pray that you will give us directions in all that we undertake to do. Father, we ask for your blessing to be upon this city continuously. God demands those that lead this city by commissioners. Mayor, city council, every person involved. We pray that you would touch now and give directions. Give instructions in those things that are necessary. In Jesus' name, amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Boren.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Jones. All present in the calendar for.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item number two. Approval of minutes from February 11, 2021.
Motion to accept minutes.
Second.
Motion for the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item. Number three, item number three is public recognitions. Under public recognitions, we've got student of the month. For February 2021. For this month, it's going to be me and Commissioner Jones. We're always printed up as Commissioner Boren, but it's going to be me and Commissioner Jones this month. So Mr. Jones, Commissioner. So Mr. Jones, Commissioner Jones, you got any words for the kids today? As a former coach and educator, can you press your button just so they can hear your wonderful words today, Coach Jones?
All the students that are present. For the student of the month, I'd like to congratulate you for all the hard work we've been doing in the classroom. And keep up the good work. Thank you.
Man, a few words. Now we've got the student of the month. First of all, we want to thank all of our educators who are out in. Cyberland for the most part. We want to thank you for the work that you do with our students. You never get enough thank yous for all that you do. And we want to make sure that we give a round of applause to our educators for all the work that they do with our kids. Next up, we want to thank. The family members who are assembled in cyberspace on Zoom with these kids today and also those who've all taken an integral part. Of making sure that these kids are on the right path because it truly takes a village to raise our children. And so we want to definitely thank our extended family members and our parents for the work that they do with these children. Let's give them a round of applause. Now onto student of the month. Student of the month, you guaranteed that I mess up three names on average. We're out of memory for me now.
I have a backup.
Student of the month has been canceled until next month. First up from Brown and Pierce Elementary School. Jocelyn Sanchez. Next up, CL Over Turf Junior Sixth Grade Center. Ansley Wells. Children's Reading Center Charter School. Michaela James. DH Miller School Edgar Hernandez. James A. Long Elementary School Talon Hill. Jenkins Middle School Ava Cottrell. Kelly Smith Elementary School Jordan Williams. Mellon Elementary School Alina Brown. Moses Elementary. Adalina Atkins. And Palaca High School Walker Mills. And our Baptist Academy. Our Kayla Hubert. Putnam Academy Arts and Sciences Brianna Harris. Putnam Ed School Deisha Jernigan. That concludes our student of the month. For February 2021. The message that we have is the same message that I got 40 years ago in Ms. Green's class. We recited it every day. It simply says, I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody. You students are somebody wonderful. You're great. You're destined for greatness. And we are excited about the future and all the work that you do. So continually do well in school. And we look forward to you being the leaders of tomorrow. Again, let's give it up for our student of the month. Next up, recognition of service. Mr. Winston Fletcher, COVID-19 Logistics Coordinator. Mr. Cut Right.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Fletcher took on a task back in March of 2020 when we first. Learned about the pandemic and everything and took on a wonderful task of stepping up front and becoming our COVID-19 logistic coordinator. He did countless jobs. One, taking test samples back and forth to Jacksonville. He did the decontamination of the buildings of the city buildings that we have property. He also. Reached out and found a lot of PPP, PPE, COVID-19 supplies that we needed to maintain our workplace. So he did a great job for that time period. So I wanted to recognize him and say thank him for a job well done. By presenting this plaque to him. And it says, presented to Winston Fletcher, COVID-19 logistic coordinator. We hereby present you with this award and recognition for your outstanding job as a COVID-19 logistic coordinator. During the height of the pandemic crisis, crisis in the city of Placa and surrounding counties. Your work with the emergency operations center through the. Transporting test samples to the laboratory facilities, distribution of supplies and maintaining. Decontamination protocol of all city buildings was impactful. Contributed toward the health and safety of the city in this moment of crisis. We appreciate the devotion to the city and continue and we couldn't have made it without you. Thank you. From March 21st, 2020 to January 31st, 2021.
He denies coming. Congratulations, Mr. Fletcher. We know that you took on the task, you took it on head on and you did a great job. You made sure that. Everything in the city kind of ran smoothly and that you kind of coordinated everything from A to Z. Including going out and sanitizing buildings. Whenever necessary, we just thank you for stepping up during that crucial time. So we definitely appreciate you. Next up, public comments. Public comments be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. If you wanted to speak during public comment, you can dial 386-329-0100 or use the YouTube chat. Is there anyone here for public comment? We'll now open the floor for public comment. Come on up. Just go up before, at the end, fill out a yellow speaker's card for me and we'll make sure we get it back to Ms. Krantz. Just come forward and give your name, your agency and address. Go ahead.
Good evening. Nicole Grace with Keep Button Beautiful 205 North Second Street, Plac reporter 32177. I just wanted to update everybody. I know we were one of the only Keep America Beautiful affiliates last year that slid in right before. Restrictions for COVID for our countywide cleanup of which Plac is always a great partner. This year, we're going to be moving it out to April. And we're starting to put together small group cleanups throughout the county. So it will be a smaller group that's put together. We're gonna be using PPE. And we'll be discussing additional safety measures from what we usually have, but April's our month.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Do we have anything in the YouTube chat? Seeing nothing. We'll close public comment. Yes.
No, Mayor, nothing.
Thank you. We'll close public comment. Move on to item number five of the agenda. It's gonna be our consent agenda. On this week's consent agenda, we've got items eight through eight. Are there any items that you wish to have removed at this time?
Item B, please.
Are there any items other than item B that you wish to have removed at this time? Seeing no other items, is there a motion?
Motion to approve. All items with the exception of B.
Second.
This motion on the floor in a second, ready for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B, adopt resolution 2021 R16. Appointing Pastor Alonso Mulberry City Chaplain.
Just had a citizen to reach out and concern as to why we're paying a city chaplain for services that we normally get for free. We can have. Some discussion on that. That would be appreciated.
So the question, why are we paying a city chaplain for services that we normally get for free? I don't think any of us have known anything about free services for chaplains. The county, the school district, everyone has chaplains on their staff. That actually get stipends as well. In the past, I know Pastor Mulberry has also been the chaplain for the sheriff's office in which he received funding. As it related to that particular matter. So. And we know the school district just hired chaplains to come in as well as the sheriff's office and those chaplains aren't working for free. So I don't know if that information is accurate.
Okay, just wanted to bring that up. And I think the citizen was concerned about him coming in to pray and we had different pastors coming in to do it. And. I just think they wanted an explanation as to why we would be.
Think when you look at the wealth of experience as well as the services of Pastor Mulberry. For what we're getting them for, we got a coupon. And so that's just kind of my thought process. Are there any other questions at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Can you make sure your mic's on?
I'll make a motion that way, sir.
There's a motion, there's a motion to approve item B. By Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Jones. Just for the record, any unreadiness, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Welcome aboard Pastor Mulberry. Although we've been calling you in the middle of the night for years to come help us out whenever there's a crisis, we are glad to have you in official capacity and bringing on some additional program. That we haven't had in the history of the city. So again, thank you for coming on board. Next up, it's gonna be public hearing. Item number six, public hearing, COVID community development block grant. Pre-application is under item A.
I believe Mrs. Tucker is speaking to this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, tonight we have Mr. Fred Fox with us from Fred Fox Enterprises and he will be conducting the public hearing.
Welcome, Mr. Fox.
Good evening, guys. How are you, how's everybody?
It's good to see you.
Good seeing you. It's been a while.
Yeah, it's always a pleasure.
And mine for me as well. Is the public hearings, the slideshow scheduled, set up or do I just need to do it from here?
I think you've got it set. It's already set. It's on the sheriff's screen now.
Okay, it's not picking up here. I'll just read it from my end then. The, there it is. It's the small city CDBG CV pre-application cycle and this is the first public hearing. There's a total. Of 41 million. There we go. Total of 41,931,595 dollars. Is being made available through a competitive application process. To local governments who are eligible to participate in the small cities. Community development block grant program. Within the state of Florida, the minimum amount a community may apply for is $200,000. The maximum amount is half, is $5 million. And the city of Plac can only submit one application and for a single project or program.
Excellent.
Do I go to the next slide? Thank you. Project activities must meet at least one of the following national objectives. Benefit to low and moderate income persons. Individuals or households, including indirect benefit activities. Where at least 51% of the beneficiaries must be low moderate income. Individuals or households. Or direct benefit activities. Where 100% of the beneficiaries must be low moderate income. Again, individuals or households. And some examples would be. If you put in sidewalks, those would be indirect benefit because people obviously. Would be walking on the sidewalks and they wouldn't go directly into their home. But let's say you had a food pantry where they picked up food and that went right in their house. That would be considered a direct beneficiary. And then the other categories could be prevention or elimination of slum and blight. Or the project could address an urgent need. Next slide, please. Project activities must prevent, prepare or for or respond to the coronavirus. And should demonstrate a, either a direct effect. Cost directly associated with the coronavirus prevention, preparation. Or response, for example, rehabilitation of a building to create additional quarantine. And isolation rooms for recovering COVID-19 patients. Or indirect effect, which would be, an example would be. Economic disruptions and you were providing small businesses with some sort of financial assistance. Next slide, please. Examples of some of the activities funded. Funding can be requested for include, but are not limited to the following. The rehabilitation of a facility for testing. Diagnosis or treatment of COVID-19. Acquire, rehabilitate or construct a group living facility. That may be used to centralize patients undergoing treatment. Installation of wiring fiber optic cables and permanent affixed equipment. Such as receivers for areas to receive broadband internet access. The rehabilitation of a senior center, community center or homeless shelter. Or replacing the HVAC system and or installing air purification systems. Acquisition and or rehabilitation of a building to expand. Capacity of homeless shelters to accommodate social distancing and isolation. Next slide, please. Examples of, some additional examples, activities that would qualify would include the installation. Of Wi-Fi routers, extenders or affordable housing buildings in our communities with. Into affordable housing buildings in our communities. Which contain at least 51% low moderate income residents. Provide testing diagnosis or other services that are fixed or mobile location. Provide equipment, supplies and materials necessary to carry out a public service. For example, childcare for working parents with distant learning facilities for school aged children. Deliver meals on wheels to quarantine individuals. Or individuals that need to maintain social distancing due to medical vulnerabilities. Next slide. The purpose of today's public hearing is to allow citizens the opportunity. To bring forward possible projects that would like to see the city of Plac to use the CDBG CV funding for. And then the last slide is that the pre-applications. Must be submitted to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity by March 15th of this year. So a little over two weeks. And this is, this is different than most of the small city cycles we've done. This is a pre-application cycle. And once they receive the pre-app, they will let us know whether the project potentially qualifies. For funding and then we would develop a full application. And there would be a second public hearing at that time to actually go over the details of what is in the application before it's submitted. And that's basically what I have and I'm glad to answer your questions. And then you can open the public hearing for any public comment.
Do you have any questions from the Commission?
I would just like to have input anytime. Well, if we do acquire those funds, I would just like to. Have some form of input as it relates to. Some of those projects that may, those funds to be used for.
I had the same sentiments. But Mr. Fox, have you identified any areas? Already that you're gonna put in the application, like specifically?
We've talked to your staff. Again, the purpose of the public hearing tonight. Is to take public input on possible projects. Once you close the public hearing, I'll be glad to discuss and I'm sure your staff will too with some projects they've come up with, they'd like to see you consider. But again, before we get into those. The purpose of the public hearing itself is to bring forward any possible projects the general public might have.
Well, as a Commissioner that represents.
You're gonna come back to it. The next item gets you to where you want to be.
Okay.
You just gotta get past, once you get past this piece, the next piece will get you to where you want to be.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Seeing nothing else from the Commission, we'll open the floor for public here. Is there anyone here for public here? Want to speak to this item? You can also dial 3290100, extension zero, or you can speak in the YouTube chat. Is there anything in the YouTube chat?
No, Mayor.
Okay, seeing nothing, we'll go ahead and close public hearing. Mr. Fox, at this point. Mr. Fox, at this point, we've closed, we've closed public hearing on this piece of the application. Do we need to take action on this? We don't need to take any action on this until item two correct.
I believe staff has got a recommendation for a project.
So moving on, after we've gone through the public hearing process, moving to item B, adopt resolution twenty twenty-one R twenty-three, authorizing the submission of a community block development grant, coronavirus grant in the amount of two million, three hundred thirty-two thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars, Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I believe Mandy has a map queued up, just in case. We can share the screen and show you the areas that we're thinking about. Ms. Tucker, do you have that ready? Thank you. So Mayor Commissioners, as you're aware, we have a lot of projects planned for the next couple of years. And when opportunities like this come up, we look for ways to do what we call capital stacking or leveraging. Based upon what DEO has advertised in the notice of funding advertisement, we believe there's an opportunity to do sidewalk replacement and enhancement in the area shown in red here to achieve social distancing that is an eligible activity under that NOFA. The important thing here is all these areas are scheduled for other construction projects at approximately the same time. So we'd be able to match and leverage the additional funding where we plan on doing these waterline and or road reconstruction projects. So this is the project that staff is presenting to you for your consideration to submit under the pre-application. And what we would be doing is replacing the existing four to five foot wide sidewalks with eight foot wide sidewalks at the same time as we are replacing the waterlines and or conducting the road reconstruction. Ms. Tucker and I are here to answer any specific questions you may have.
So by doing it that way, you end up with a total streets project, pretty much?
Yes, sir.
So I think you've got a couple of members of the commission have questions about the scope of the projects proposed, as well as the possibility of other projects that may be on that list that were previously discussed by Mr. Fox. So are there any questions from the commission at this time? Or any thoughts as to any project that you'd like to see pushed forward?
For me, I'm thinking about like more so like the Price Martin area where there's not a pool in, in that area. We got pools over at the golf course, and we also had one on Westover, which used to be a pool over in, on the north side. We can look at things along those lines, or building up a full-fledged civic center, like recreational, after-school activities, the whole line. That's, that's what I grew up on, and that's what's pretty much missing in the, on the, on the north side of town. Very little resources. If they want to go to the pool on Westover, it's accessibility problem. And the same thing with the golf course, which there used to be the pool that the city owned, and it transferred over to individual ownership or private ownership. So I, I, I think we would need to start thinking about projects where we can put that activities where the kids have accessibility to it.
I can respond to that if you'd like.
Yes, sir.
For this particular grant, that's not going to work because this, this grant, again, it's COVID-related, and a pool would basically be bringing people together. And, and the purpose here is to keep them, you know, socially distanced, so they're safe. However, the small city CDBQ program, which you're finishing up a project now with the waterline replacement on Thirteenth and Fourteenth Street, and in that general area, basically it's south of St. John's. That program fits very well. You could get a grant of seven hundred and fifty thousand and go in for recreational improvement and build a pool at one of your facilities, particularly on the north side. Obviously, that would have primarily the low and moderate income benefit. So that's, that's certainly a pro, a good use for those funds. We've just, we haven't done a pool recently, but we've done several community centers in other cities. So that would be a good eligible project if that's something the commissioner wanted to do.
Definitely. Sounds like a great, sounds like a great opportunity for us.
Yeah, basically, because, you know, we used to have a civic center where we, after school, kids usually be able to go in and play, you know, board games, card games, shoot pool, billiards, different things of that nature. So, so it's, it's just, we're missing that piece. And I would like to see if we can kind of incorporate that, if we cannot get a swimming pool at this time. That's all I have.
So definitely, Mr. Fox, when, once the cycle closes out, we definitely want to look at those opportunities.
And again, that process will be, you know, coming through your citizens group, through the council, commission. And then at that point, you can decide which type of projects you want to do.
Right. Anything else, Mr. Jones, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, Mr. Fox, or Mr. Griffin. Due to the fact that this money is going to be disseminated due to the LMI, I see disproportionate red lines on the south side of St. John's Avenue, and only a few on the north side of St. John's Avenue. And what I'd like to entertain is, similar to Commissioner Borm, we only have the Price Martin Center, and I know with COVID-related stuff, you could construct something like a shelter, or you got guys mentioned someplace that we could give out PPEs and things of that nature. So I would like to see some of that, or maybe we can construct a community center on the north side of St. John's Avenue, rather than, I know we're doing a sidewalk project now, but I think that money could be used for something like that. I know we have a Price Martin Center, and I know there's plans to upgrade that, but I think we need something a little larger than that because it's dated. And if we could spend the money doing something like the shelter or something, could double as a meeting room for the commission, because during pandemic, you see, we didn't have enough space, so it could double for something like that as well. So I would like to see staff consider those, those types of moves and incorporate that some kind of way in these plans.
Anything else from the commission? What's our deadline on the application? Will that, will the application submitted on this?
They're due March fifteenth. It's a pre-app in this case, but it's due March fifteenth.
It's pre-app March fifteenth. Any other comments from the commission, thoughts? Commissioner Campbell?
I echo the same sentiments that have been brought forth by Commissioner Borm, as well as Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner McCaskill?
Same sentiments. I'm just glad to see that the issue's been addressed, and we're being able to have some monies to come in to address these COVID issues and provide some services during this time.
So what's the pleasure of the commission at this time? Is there any motions?
I'd like to entertain a motion to go ahead and apply for this particular grant, this money.
Second.
Do we want to apply for it? So just for clarity, are we applying for it with the project that's been presented by staff at this time? Because that's what we would be applying for, is this particular project that's on the board at this time?
Well, for this particular plan right now, I do not, I do not, I want you to approve that one. With the amendments that were mentioned by this commission, if you can reconsider and draw up those particular considerations, if not, no, I, I don't, I don't, I don't
Mayor, could I address that?
To be accepted.
Just one second.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, sir. Just in response to a lot of the comments and suggestions, those are all great suggestions. I would like to stress that we believe that this is a strong application based upon the scope of work that's suggested. I don't believe that a community center or a pool or something of a recreation in nature would make a strong argument for funding. One of the reasons that staff proposed this project is it is also a way of addressing some of our, you know, just needs outside of COVID nineteen. It, not that it doesn't address the intent of the funding from DEO, we believe that it does, and it is a good project. But these are needs that we have now. So I would, I would urge you to consider the project as presented. I will say, Commissioner Jones' comment about the disproportionate number of red lines on the south side versus the north side. In looking at this map, something has changed since we drew this. We did get notice of award on the North Thirteenth Street project. So i- if the commission would entertain it, it might be realistic to see if we can swap out or amend the application to include those areas where we're already planning the stormwater improvements on North Thirteenth and Fourteenth, up around Washington Street and Eagle Street.
Family Life Center.
I'm sorry, sir?
Near the Family Life Center.
Yes, sir. Yeah. You know, we didn't know that we were getting that funding at the time when we were putting this project together. So, you know, in light of that, I think that we could amend this, this scope to include those areas.
And can I address that as well very quickly? The, the resolution that we would be submitting with the application does not have to contain the cost at this point. So we would be able to amend to include those locations without having to bring the resolution back.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, well, that being said, then I, I would like to support that. But if we can just make sure that, you know, we can make some of those improvements, because we've been putting a lot of emphasis on the, on the, on the south side. And I think we need to look and see what we can do to improve some of those areas in, in some of the economically depressed areas, which is mostly on the north side. And I think that's where a lot of the data is being used to get those funds. So I would like to see some of those funds go toward that project in terms of the water project.
Right. Just as a point of information, I think for the commission, we, we, we wholeheartedly agree, and I wholeheartedly agree with you that there's definitely a need to have those, the particular facilities that you're talking about, from swimming to a recreational facility over there. I've engaged in conversations with the school district as well, as they talked about the closing of Jenkins Middle School, and the possibility of getting the north side neighborhood facility center back for the city. I was going to say that for my closing comments, but I think in lieu of what we're talking about today, there may be an opportunity to, to create a partnership with the school district in order to get that facility back, so that if, in fact, the school closes, that it would create a haven for us. You know, we know the Family Life Center is there. We've had conversations as well with the Family Life Center. Mr. Cutwright's engaged in those, Chief Shaw, we've all engaged in those to try to create a safe place and a hub. They've got a pool inside that facility, and at one point, they seemed to be interested in possibly selling it. And we were trying to see if there was an opportunity to come back before the commission and bring that stuff forward. The church's position is kind of unknown at this time as to whether they're interested in that facility, which would definitely be in keeping with what you're talking about now. But we do know that the school district is interesting and seeing that there's an opportunity to do what we grew up on. And I think Commissioner Borm, you got a chance to see it when you first moved back here, and the rest of us kind of grew up with it. But I think those opportunities exist. The other thing we've looked at is some of the FEMA grants and other opportunities where there were opportunities to create shelters, which may have a double life outside of hurricane season. And also looking at ways that we can use CDBG and appropriations to definitely meet those needs. And so I can assure you that Chief and Mr. Cutwright and Mr. Griffin, Ms. Tucker and I, as well as having a conversation with Mr. Fox, we've spent countless hours trying to find funding mechanisms that would really meet a multitude of needs, because the biggest need we have is having a shelter inside the city limits of Platte. That's not a school. And so when it comes to hurricanes and dealing with homelessness and some of those other things, and there's some opportunities that are coming up through some other funding sources that we'll have a great chance of doing exactly some of those things. And it may create the ability to double up and, and actually do all the things that you're thinking about, because I think we all know what benefits they serve when we were younger, and how it was a tragedy that the city gave away the north side neighborhood facility center for a dollar. And we found ourselves with children being unable to have that haven, which created reductions of crime, crime prevention, and other tools that we saw with the Weeden Seed Center, some of the other places. So definitely, I think it's on the heart of all of us to create a hub and to make sure there isn't a disproportionate allocation of resources. I think with the advent of the park coming in, hopefully the construction of those fields will be done by June. I think with that, you look at this project and the way this project sets up, coming down the Eleventh Street corridor as well, going back around Tenth Street, where the public works facility is going to be moved from, it creates a great trail connector, as well as an opportunity with the sidewalks to come in to be able to do some stuff that'll enhance the neighborhood in the future. And we still have the opportunities from other funding sources to apply for grants or even use CDBG community grants to try to see what we can do to make all of this kind of work. And so that's, I definitely agree with the sentiments of everybody. And I agree with staff that we've got to use every opportunity that we have while we have people mobilized to improve the communities and also meet the qualifications of the grant. Commissioner Jones?
And I can appreciate that, Mayor. Two things I want to point out. The first one is, it's about to say you had a recommendation for staff, and I'm new, so I would like to know what staff comprised of making up these recommendations. Who actually made up the recommendations first? Could you share with us? You mentioned in staff.
Commissioner Jones? My sir.
Sorry, Mr. Holmes.
That's okay. It, it was Mr. Griffin, Ms. Tucker, and I agreed with their assessment. Again, this grant has a, essentially was purpose-driven, and our ability to try to qualify for the grant was based upon our coming up with a project that might meet the grant criteria, COVID-related, as Mr. Fox indicated. And the eight-foot sidewalks, in conjunction with the projects that we already had ongoing with streets, as the mayor indicated, was a way of us trying to basically finish a project. And once those projects are finished, then obviously we can turn to others. But again, this was not a open-ended sort of any subject matter grant. It was one that we got guidance on from the, from Fred Fox, Mr. Fox. As a matter of fact, when it was initially, when we were initially made aware of it, unless I'm mistaken, we were of the opinion that it was even more limited than what we ultimately found that it might be. Is that not correct?
Who are you directing that at, Don?
Anyone who can answer it.
Yeah, I mean, the, the different projects, the different examples come right out of the guidebook from DEO.
So when you can put a grant together that is anything you, or a grant application together, that's anything you want. But if it doesn't fall within the parameters of what DEO tells you the grant's going to be focusing on, you're wasting your time. And so we rely upon Mr. Fox to provide us with some information about what he thinks we might be able to, to, to basically qualify for. And any money we get from these sources is money that the state doesn't have to use from other sources. So in talking to Jonathan, Mandy, and Mr. Fox, it looked like the widening of the sidewalks, which are in conjunction with other street improvement projects, would be something we might qualify for, when we may not. I mean, this was, as I understand it, what we thought would be the best chance we had of getting this money. If we don't get it, then we don't. But some of the other things that have been talked about, as I was given to understand the grant, would not even meet the qualifying criteria. Is it Mr. Fox, is that not, is that not what you advised us? For instance, a pool. Would a pool even get past the, the threshold of qualifications?
Well, because you're bringing people together as opposed to keeping them separated. That's the, again, you're trying to keep the, the amount of COVID down. And one of the ways you do that is by separation.
Commissioner Jones? Okay, Mr. Fox. So that was the first.
So that was the first question, Mandy, Jonathan, and Mr. Holmes. And that's good. But as I'm looking at the criteria, it says prevention or elimination of slum and blight. And also says a direct benefit of activities, hundred percent beneficiary areas must be L M I. So, and it must be urgent need. A need for a shelter is urgent during this crisis. And so that's what I said. The pool came from another commissioner. But I said a shelter. And so we could identify a place or area that we could actually, actually either construct or bring a place up the coast for a shelter was number one, my number one. And, and secondly, if you do roads, like I mentioned, North Nineteenth Street, Madison Street down from maybe Tenth, sorry, Ninth, on down to Twenty Fourth Street, those are roads that are used heavily. So we can actually say during COVID, you know, we utilize those road, emergency services, emergency vehicles and the such. So those are urgent needs during this type of a pandemic or whatever. Because it says for COVID-related community development block grants. So a sidewalk aligned into eight, for ADA compliant, we could also do that in those areas as well. Which I know the sidewalks were done some time ago, but I don't think they're any, any why. And so that, that would address the concerns that the projects are disproportionate on one side of St. John's Avenue versus the other. And we definitely, and those things do meet the criteria of what you put in front of us today. So, so the shelters versus the sidewalk, I think we just would, we need to weigh the options of what is more necessary. And I know that we're applying for a grant we may not get, but I do want to clarify that these, they do meet the criteria of what we asked. Mr. Griffith, did we not just get a grant that we would use to harden and make a shelter out of the Price Martin Center?
I think so, we did.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Million dollars?
In excess of a million, yes, sir.
All right, so Commissioner Jones, I'm sure you were, you recall that. But very recently, within the last month or six weeks, we received a grant in excess of a million dollars to harden, for lack of a better term, Price Martin Center a shelter. Maybe that's not all that's necessary, but we did get that grant for the Price Martin. Right, I did read that. And I think what we were discussing is the Price Martin Center, as the size it is right now, it really won't be much of a shelter because it's rather, rather small. And I don't think, even when we discussed having the city commissioner meetings in there, we decided that it was too small for that. So I'm just, I'm just forecasting for the future that if we run against something of this nature again, that we would be prepared to continue to do the city business. So I think that, that will address an urgent need. So that's all I have to say about it. I just wanted to point it out for the commissions.
Commissioner Borum?
All right, well, just not the pool, got that plain and clear. But anyways, going back to Thirteenth Street area, I think that's an area where we have a lot of water line breaks. In fact, we had several people I dealt with over the past, what, seven, eight months that had issues over in that area and stayed out there for, for quite some time. And Jonathan and city managers should be aware of that. But those funds can be used to help improve the water lines in that area. And again, it would be a direct benefit for the criteria that's in the, in the, in the presentation. So that's what I'm saying. But when we get on the south side, you got, when you look at the income disparity, it, it would be, it would not be benefiting the people who, the information is statistically gathered from, that's what, that's what my belief is. So I think if we, if we were improving that Thirteenth Street corridor, I think that would be a direct benefit based on the criteria and it does meet, and, and, and it does meet whatever D E O requires.
So you want, you're saying that that fifteen, Thirteenth to Fifteenth Street, well, actually Fourteenth to Fifteenth Street area, where we had the, the water line breaks and the flooding before with the hurricanes and then just recently?
Correct.
That's back Ocean or Napoleon.
Correct.
But my question is, can you use the grant for infrastructure upgrades?
So I, I can address that, and I'd like to address the water line, sir. We are moving in that direction. The reason that you see a lot of this south of Reed Street is because the timelines line up with the phases that are set for construction during when we would, if we were to get this funding from D E O. That run up north Eleventh, that's one of the reasons we included that. That's one of the roads that was not upgraded in the late nineties and early two thousands for the water lines. And that's one of the earliest phases you're going to see where we head north of Reed Street. Ultimately, I believe that the utility fund is going to be able to square off up to North Nineteenth Street within five years, based upon the rate that we're going. We should have the water line squared off to Mosley before the end of this calendar year on the south side of Reed Street, with the exception of St. John's Avenue, which I would expect to have happened by 2023. And that's why we've also included that area here. I do want to remind you, staff does believe we could go ahead and add that portion of North Thirteenth and North Fourteenth Street where we expect to do that stormwater project. And I, I would actually encourage you to do that. I think that would be a good addition to this project. And we would make a connection down to Madison Street so that we could make the argument that the sidewalks are there for a specific purpose. The residents would be able to travel from residential areas to commercial areas, similar to what you see on North Eleventh and St. John's and South Thirteenth Street. But again, I just want to stress, we are headed in that north direction with our infrastructure renewal initiative. It's just going to take a little while, a couple more years.
Yeah, I don't even think we have sidewalks on, from Thirteenth, Fourteenth to Fifteenth. And all coming back around from, from Bronson, from Bronson back to Napoleon and Ocean in that area. So it is needed. So if we're gonna, what's our timeline on, on looking at the sewer projects over there?
On the storm sewer project?
Yeah.
Ms. Tucker, do you know when we would expect to have a grant award in hand or grant agreement?
This ballpark doesn't have to be tight.
I'm assuming within the next few months, out to six months, they're, they're processing it right now. And it just all depends on the agency.
Keep in mind too, the first step is an environmental review that we have to do that's going to take about six months. So you're looking at bidding it out probably nine to twelve months from now.
See, I like to see that added as well. I think it makes sense. And I think it'll still be in keeping with the final portions of it. We can still deal with the planning aspects if there's a possibility. And then we've got a paving plan that's already in place.
So you're saying that North Thirteenth Street and Fourteenth Street and those sidewalks around?
Correct. Because I, I think, and I think the piece that's missing is when you look at this project and what's happening on Tenth and Eleventh, I think you're talking about creating almost like another trail loop that ties in with the, with our current trail by the Price Martin Center coming down Eleventh Street, which is a business corridor, which gives us an opportunity to really dress up that area that's full of black. And then come back around to Tenth, come through Tenth Street by the new park, I think, which gives us, you know, natural ingress and egress off of what we do and a connector that goes back through for future trails that have been identified on that project, i.e. Dunham Street. And so I, I think the project has weight. It goes right along with what we're doing. But I think the things that have been raised by the commission for future considerations are definitely things that we, that have been on the horizon. And we're just looking for funding sources to get to where we need to be. So.
Mayor, if I could add something about North Nineteenth Street? Because I, I've got some information I'd like to share with the commission. Ms. Tucker and I did look at that corridor. There are two primary reasons it wasn't included at this time. The first is the right-of-way width is inconsistent, anywhere from forty feet to fifty feet. So we saw some problems in trying to expand the sidewalk there without having to do right-of-way acquisition. The second is that road is partially maintained by the county per inter-local agreement. And staff believes that the city needs to have a discussion with the county in sharing in any costs in any of that infrastructure, be it sidewalks or road reconstruction.
Agreed. It's a great opportunity, it's a better place for us. And so considering the majority of the funds come from city business anyway. So if there's no further discussion from the commission, Commissioner Jones, you got something else?
Yes, sir, I do.
We'll be at the ten o'clock, go ahead.
Understanding what all have been said by both sides, you guys have listened to us. But I would just like to recommend that when things of this nature is brought up and the staff is actually discussing it, part of us coming to the meeting, that maybe a commissioner is appointed to come in and be in these discussions so that you could actually have the input on the, you know, our constituents call us all the time and complain about things. And maybe this is a way that we could actually give some input and, and say, hey, listen, we've gotten numerous of suggestions to be done here or there so that we wouldn't hash it out here in the, in the meeting as such. But I still feel adamant about the disproportionate projects going on on one side of the town versus the other. And I know about the C R A district, those are horses of two different colors. But this is one where there's an opportunity and we could actually do something on the north side. And, you know, and, and, and we can utilize this money. And it don't have to be the Price Martin Center, I do understand that. But it could mean that we put some monies in, over into Price Martin Center to some of the properties that we own in that area. And I'm done with it.
You sure? Do you want me to use more time? Go ahead.
No, I'm good.
You finished?
Yeah. Really?
I think, and I think what the commission is saying is that if we get open-ended opportunities that may exist for grants to come in and do community projects, just to shoot a filler out to the commission so that the commission can, can provide you with some input in the future. I think it's a good, it's a good process learning step for everybody to be able to say, hey, hey, here's the grant, here's the criteria. And I also think it may be an opportunity for us to actually start to do some explanation on how scoring works. And I think that's the big piece of this that's missing. Because you want to check the boxes and make sure that your grant's going to score high so that you can get funded. And I think that it's a great learning tool when you start talking funding streams, to be able to put that information out there. So I, I, I think there's more so an opportunity for us all to, to gain from this piece to be able to say, hey, you know, let's, let's have this conversation on the front end as opposed to the back end by just disseminating a little differently. And that, that's just a process thing, I think, more than anything else. And I think when we started looking at where we are project-wise, when you started talking about the replacement of water lines from Fifth to Fourteenth, which is one of our phases that's coming up for our potable water projects, I think the conversations as to the disproportionate allocation will start to slow because you'll start to see the streets from Fifth to Fourteenth looking more like the streets look on the south side of town. And that's just another phase of the project that's coming in for portable water. And so when you look at some of the stuff that we've done for portable water lines and, and things of that nature, you'll see that there has been great consideration for those. But I think the, what we've got here overall is still good conversation because we know historically there has not been any consideration of, of how we allocate resources. And the majority of the resources have gone to the riverfront and not to the people. And so I think as we consider what's going on, we'll start to look at it. The other thing, I think the commission doesn't know about the Nineteenth Street corridor and even some of the other streets that are on the north side. We use M stop as a way to try to come in and get funding from D O T and other places to do road improvements, as we do infrastructure improvements and stuff like that. So Nineteenth Street was on our corridor and Eleventh Street. They were both projects that we pushed out through M stop. And those projects were turned down in the past. And so those are things that we've pushed for in, in, in order to try to do total streets like we're doing Washington Street. So there are a lot of different funding sources that we've attacked to try to do exactly those things. And we just haven't been able to get some of it where it needs to be. But I think projects like this, which go with enhancements to the park as a whole, getting the park finalized finally is going to push through the total streets piece and also trying to enhance the Eleventh Street corridor as a whole, I think is going to be critical. And then going back and making sure that we do the same things from Thirteenth to Fifteenth that we're doing on Fourteenth Street from a drainage standpoint, so that we don't have that flooding issue anymore, especially during hurricane incidents and things of that nature. And, you know, it's, it's an area that's already been on the agenda.
Mayor, your point's well taken. And in the future, when we get a grant, when we, when we are made aware of a grant opportunity, I'll make certain that the commission is made aware of it as soon as I'm aware of it. And we'll develop a mechanism for getting input from the commissioners so that staff can have some direction from the commissioners as to what you'd like us to focus on.
Yeah. I, I would like to add, I thank you for that, Don. But I do, I can say that each, any, anytime that I have a question and the agenda comes out, that staff is readily available to answer any questions. I try to get in and, you know, call or meet. So I, I thank you all for the job that you are doing and trying to disseminate that information to us. So I have to state that for the record.
Right. And I add this piece too. With Ms. Tucker and Mr. Griffith on this project, they also understand the same things and have an understanding what the considerations are of the commission as to how resources are allocated. And when the idea for this particular, when this grant came available, they wanted to make sure that it included the northern corridors and that it, that it pushed through. And so when I was made, when I was made aware of it, they talked specifically about an opportunity to come in and do enhancements to the neighborhood. And so I think that was a consideration. And a lot of times, they're the boots on the ground and they know more about some of this stuff than, than we know. Particularly where the problem areas are. And they've been extremely proactive in bringing forth grants that historically have not been applied for over the, you know, prior to the last six years or five years. And I, I think they've done an excellent job. And what they try to do more than anything else is, is get, is get out front. And so I think in getting out front, we just make sure, we just add in that little piece where there's some additional communication going out to say, hey, grant opportunities are here, this may come up sooner or later. Do, you know, send it out, you got it and you can see it, you can bet it. If you've got an idea, you can push it forward. And the other thing is, I encourage everybody to, to just have, you know, you get a chance, you know, reach out to both Ms. Tucker and Ms. Griffith and say, hey, what's, what opportunities are out there that exist? That's how I find out about a lot of stuff. Because I'm talking to them and they're saying, hey, we got an opportunity here. We want to bring something before the commission. And they, they look for someone to be able to bounce the ideas off of. So they, they're definitely open to everything. And I just, I, again, I applaud them and Mr. Fox for the work they've done, but also applaud this commission for the considerations that you have as far as trying to make sure that we serve all citizens. Because that's the biggest thing. If we can raise the floor, we can raise the ceiling. And I think that's the whole piece of it. There's no reason to have a beautiful gateway into a city of hurting people if we won't help the hurting people. And so that's where we are and that's what we have to do. Any other conversations, communications, concerns from the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion at this point.
Motion to approve.
With the amendments?
Motion to approve with the amendment. But what I was talking about, I mean.
Thirteenth Street.
But that's, that is the.
But you want, so your motion, does your motion include the Thirteenth to Fifteenth Street on Napoleon area?
Mayor, help?
Yes.
Um, for the record.
Jones' motion still on?
Yes, sir, he's not withdrawing his motion.
Jones', can you repeat that motion that was thirty minutes ago?
Motion by Commissioner Jones to approve applying for this grant with considerations as outlined by the commission.
No, I think it was a little bit different than that because he made a statement that.
Commissioner Jones, can you restate your motion?
Yes. I motion to accept it with amendments that we identify area on the north side that we can utilize or use as a shelter and include roads in areas as Madison Street, Nineteenth, North Nineteenth Street as far as improvements. That's what I said. Now, also, just, just to add before you guys vote on this. When you go back, if you could, those three pages back after, after the.
I just said you would finish.
Slide presentation, but I think this is important. And it goes examples of some activities which can be applied for, include, but not, are limited to the following. And I think that's what we're missing. Okay, I understand the sidewalks are ADA compliant. But you have a lot of other things that we could like to use that money for that's going to be utilized to help the residents in, in, in the community. Now, that's including Wi-Fi router extenders for affordable housing buildings, buildings in the L I M residence, childcare, meals on wheels. Okay, so in the case of the pandemic like we have right now, you're saying necessity things. I think you should look at those things that are needed in places that can be used for distributing P P Es. distributing PPEs. So again, I just wanted to bring that out. I I know everybody have looked and read through this, but it goes. So that's why I want to clarify, that's the reason that I am pointing out the Price Martin.
So, you know, you do have the ability to withdraw that motion and make a motion that we bring this back in a week or so to give you an opportunity to do your to do research or either bring different projects back.
If I might add, the deadline is March fifteenth, and I don't think we have another meeting.
You can, we can call a special meeting if that's if it may be necessary to kind of deal with it. But you understand that you're going to be under the gun trying to get the scope of the project in place.
And I want to ask about your motion, Commissioner Jones. You said it includes North Nineteenth Street, and I think he gave us reasons as to why they didn't add it.
Yeah, he just said that.
But you're still including it in your motion?
We can withdraw that. Um, um, truthfully, we go ahead to vote. I just withdraw my motion. All right, how about that?
You're right, right. As much as that.
My motion.
Commissioner Jones is withdrawing his motion. Is that okay with you, Commissioner Borm? You made the second.
Yes.
All right. So is there another motion at this time?
I would like to make the motion to approve with the modifications or the inclusion of Thirteenth and Fifteenth Street and Fourteenth Street to be investigated as part of the beneficiary benefit of the of the grant.
Second.
Motion on the floor. There's a second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion? Seeing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. And in lieu of the spirited conversation that we've had on this, I want us to put together a workshop where we sit down and we talk about where the commissioners bring forward projects, every commissioner bring forward some projects that they want to see done in the city. So as if even if we're doing what we're going to do with Commissioner Jones's workshop, that we at least have some time where everybody brings projects that they want to see within the city. And we start to discuss how we prioritize those projects overall across the board, how we need to deal with grants or whatever. I want us to have a workshop on that so that we can have more of this debate because I think it's not even debate, it's more conversation. And I think the conversation is critical so that when staff goes out and starts looking for grant opportunities, when they start looking for other funding opportunities, they really know what's on the heart of the commission. And what we may find is that everybody's pretty much on the same plane as it relates to where we are. But there are very few opportunities that we have to have this type dialogue as it relates to what's in place because it's hard to guess on what what's wanted or needed until you get into this position. And I think this has been great conversation because it gives really, I think, more insight to Ms. Tucker and Mr. Mr. Griffin and even Mr. Fox as they see opportunities that may exist from the CDBG standpoint or from other funding standpoints because Mr. Fox sees money come all across the state. And he sees projects that get approved and they're weighted heavily. And I think Mr. Griffin and Ms. Tucker have become pretty good at finding resources throughout as well. And so I think overall it's just it's an opportunity. So I I want to see a workshop if the commission is okay with that come up in at least in March or by the end of March so that we can have that dialogue so that we don't miss opportunities based upon things that may be a passion or a priority to other commissioners. We can add it in if that's what you want. If that's how we want to do it, unless we can we can come back for another day, but this is important.
Versus having several workshops and.
You can come back. Y'all just want to add it in? So let's add this to the agenda for Commissioner Jones's workshop. And that way we can have some discussion on grants as well and what priorities are on project, project priorities, we'll call it that. And I think this has been a great conversation. So again, thanks, Mr. Fox. Thanks to both Ms. Griffin, Ms. Ms. Tucker, Mr. Holmes for your work on this on this piece.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving on to item number seven on the agenda, adopt resolution twenty twenty-one R twenty-four.
A resolution authorizing execution of modification number one to CDBG DR HM zero zero five with the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity.
So move.
Got a motion on the floor, second by Commissioner Campbell. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? See no one here for public hearing. If you're here for public hearing, you can still dial the same number, three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero or the YouTube chat as well. Is there anything in the chat?
No, sir.
See nothing will close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item eight, adopt resolution twenty twenty-one R twenty-five, authorize of execution, change order number two with DB Civil for CDBG disaster relief, Fourteenth, Fifteenth Street Drainage Project at the amount of nine eighty-eight, one, nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents. Ms. Cratch.
A resolution authorizing execution of a contract and deductive change order number two to DB Civil Construction for the CDBG DR South Fourteenth Street and South Fifteenth Street Drainage Project pending Florida Department of Economic Opportunity review and approval.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Mr. Griffin, can you just give a quick synopsis of the project?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. So this is related to item number seven. Change order number one was a deduct. Majority of this change order amount was removed from the contract because it came in overbid. Immediately following that approval of change order number one, the deductive amount, we put a request into DEO for additional funding. In addition to that, some additional work was identified with the first phase, additional sewer replacement work that was necessary. Ultimately, DEO did agree to increasing the project in the amount of nine hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars. And we are pushing forward with this change order, adding in the original scope that was removed as well as the sewer scope that is necessary.
Right. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is anyone here for public hearing? Again, three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero or the YouTube chat. If you're here publicly, you can take a yellow speaker's card and come forward and speak on this issue. We have anything in the YouTube chat at this time?
No, Mayor.
I'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. You have a question? Go ahead.
Oh, Mayor, I just want wanted to be documented and reported as it's South Fourteenth Street and South Fifteenth Street Drainage Project because it doesn't go north and south. It is a South Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street project.
Okay.
But it's not.
Moving on, item number nine, adopt resolution twenty twenty-one R twenty-six, authorize of execution of lease with MG Diaz of the old airport runways, initial term of three months with a possible four month extension at six thousand dollars per month.
A resolution of the City of Placa authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with MG Diaz Incorporated.
So move.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Can we get an explanation on the project? Just a summary just for the public.
Mr. Mayor, we've had a group approach just about leasing an unused and closed portion of a runway at the airport for purposes of staging and and storage of materials in conjunction with the project. I believe it has to do with FPL power lines. They've asked for a three month lease, six thousand a month, or they've offered a three month lease at six thousand a month. That area of the airport is not used. It's closed. It's basically, well, as I said, not being used. So it appears a way that we can we can generate a little bit of revenue, use that particular stretch of the closed runway. The lease, I think, was prepared by the city attorney. I have reviewed it. It appears to be a a lease that protects the city from liability. And so we recommend the lease.
Thank you. Open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Same instructions. Three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero, YouTube chat, or you can spell out the yellow speaker's card. Is there anyone here for public hearing? See no one. Do we have anything in the YouTube chat?
No, Mayor.
Close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, the city manager and administrative reports. Chief Shaw. I'll do it a little different this time. Mr. Holmes, I'll come back to you.
That's quite all right.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners.
Good evening, good evening.
In light of the recent rise in violent crime, we thought it important to bring to you today some information regarding some of the violent crime, not only locally, but within across the state of Florida. Excuse me one second. We wanted to be able to provide some information on violent crime and in doing so, we decided to focus on homicide as an example. Homicide was chosen simply because it allowed us to compare apples to apples throughout the state of Florida as well as locally because no matter what it is, it's simply reported as homicide. It can't be manipulated in any manner as how it's reported and how the data is recorded. What we are going to provide for you is a snapshot of any statistics data, statistical data concerning homicides in the state of Florida through two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen. It also will provide a comparison of statistical data for months of January through June of two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty and for surrounding counties as well as counties within our state. It will go into a brief review of homicides that occurred within the city in two thousand twenty and conclude with steps taken locally by our agency as well as our staffing levels and our communication to the public. One thing we want to point out throughout the state for two thousand seventeen through two thousand nineteen. In two thousand seventeen, there was eleven hundred and fifty-two homicides within the state of Florida. Eight hundred and eight was committed by firearm. In two thousand eighteen, eleven hundred and seventy-five homicides and eight hundred and fifty-six was committed by firearm. And in two thousand nineteen, twelve hundred and nine was committed in the state of Florida and eight hundred seventy-seven was committed by firearm. We pointed that out to show the increasing number of violent crimes or homicides occurred across the state. We also wanted to go into June, January to June of two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty to whereas five hundred and twelve homicides was committed in two thousand nineteen for the first six months and three hundred and seventy-nine was committed by use of firearm. And then in two thousand twenty, five hundred and ninety-five homicides was committed and four hundred and sixty-six was used by, of course, the firearms over a six month period. Again, we wanted to be able to point out, being that only the first half of the month or first half of the year, the statistical data for two thousand twenty has been released, the end of the last half half has not. So we wanted to be able to compare to you to show you that twenty twenty was also showing an increase over the first six months. Homicides by surrounding counties, we wanted to show you that we do have information that shows for the first six months of January to June, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, Latshaw County showed in two thousand nineteen, three homicides and two thousand twenty-nine homicides. Bradford increased by one, Clay increased by one. Volusia increased by nine. In Putnam locally, we we increased by one, just for that information. Two thousand nineteen, twenty-seven homicides occurred in the surrounding areas of the reporting period. Homicides increased by twenty-two percent in two thousand twenty. For the same timeframe, a total of thirty-three cases was increased. We also wanted to point out some of our local homicides throughout last year of two thousand twenty just to show some of the things that we for motive and and what we believe was was motive and how they occurred. We had one that occurred by knife. We believe that was racially, I'm sorry, a relationship motive, motive, motive built on a crime of passion. It was done by knife. We also had five others that was done by firearm. And we can confirm motives for only two of those as to narcotics. We do have assumptions that some of the other ones may have been narcotics but have not been able to confirm that portion as of yet. In looking at our reaction again to some of these homicides that we have for the rest for the end of the year, we created a special enforcement task force that focused strictly on violent crime offenders and felony felons in the area of the state of Florida, I'm sorry, in the city of Placa, our violent repeat offenders. We also worked with the state's attorney office for the prolific violent offenders program to be able to target these individuals. Key accomplishments since starting in in December, I'm sorry, November, we had eighteen individuals arrested, eight additional charges filed on additional suspects, two search warrants executed. During that time, I like to include that our, we were at a minimum staffing level and it required not only myself but the captains to also work the street, freeing up our detectives and some of our officers to be reassigned temporarily so that we can accomplish these goals. In doing so, I believe we are making grounds. I do have this information to share with you. There is some some information I like to, I didn't want to release publicly, that's why I didn't put it on PowerPoint, but I I can share it with you and I would like I'd like to email it to you if you if you want it. Also, we like to make a plea to the to public in in the last part of it. And we are, we realize within the community violent crime is going up. But we also realize that we cannot attack this on our own. We want to reach out and ask the public, if you do have information, please do not hesitate to share it with us. Our tip line is available and we've been putting information out on Crime Stoppers for you to call in for anything that that you can give us to help us prevent these things in the community and put a stop to it. One eight hundred Crime Stoppers.
Well, I mean, I I just want to just thank them for the good work that they're doing, but if if we, is that report, is it, can we get a copy of?
Yes, sir. I I will, like I mentioned earlier, I'll email it out to each one of you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to see that and.
All data from the report was collected off the FDLE website.
Right. And there there were certain, I know there were certain areas that there were different things, whether it was crime or nuisance things or whatever. And I know we're short staffed, but are you still working on some of those community relation things or the areas that we kind of spoke about a while back?
Yes, sir. We have been targeting different areas, if that's what you're speaking of. We have been targeting different areas and we still have been identifying those and addressing those as they come up.
Appreciate it, sir.
Chief, you and I have spoken at great length in reference to the violence as I have addressed you. And you have explained some things to to me of how the process is of even if you have suspects, how tough it is to get charges filed. And 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 I know people in the public, you know, wonder why no one has been apprehended. Could you just give a little background on what it takes to, you know, make a case on someone that is a suspect or or person of interest, let's say that way, person of interest, and you just can't make an arrest on that person?
Sure. Anytime we do have a person of interest, before we can make an arrest, we have to have probo calls for arrest. We have to be able to identify and prove with fact that they were involved in that crime. But when it comes to homicide, it's not a step that we go to the state's attorney's office. Homicide must be approved by the HIU unit, which the homicide unit that's directed by the state's attorney's office. You can no longer, if you want to, after the case has been committed, just go out and make the arrest without a warrant. And that warrant has to be approved by those attorneys.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner?
Thank you for the update, Chief, and we appreciate that.
Anything else for the commission?
Just thank you, thank you for the good work that they're doing. I mean, I know there's short staff and everything and like like Chief Shaw said that he's on, he's also patrolling. Just thank him, thank him for the good work that they're doing. I mean, I know there's short staff and everything, and like, like Chief Shaw said, that he's, he's also patrolling as well as he got his captains patrolling as well. So just want to commend you guys for the well-work that you're doing and serving the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Back to you, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I guess I will mention what all of you are already aware of to one extent or another. We did have, we have had some staff changes. We have had a total of four resignations over the last weeks. They were not all at one time, but we have had a total of four. Of course, Ms. Becker, our finance director, is leaving to take a position with the clerk's office, which we certainly will miss her and hate to see her go. She is still working feverishly to help us in a number of different respects as we attempt to clarify some issues and address some issues. And she's doing a great, a great job. She's not asleep at the switch as she serves out her final few days. But that was a position that, and a move that she can explain if you have questions about, but it's a career opportunity for her, and certainly while we hate to see her go, none of us can begrudge someone an opportunity to, to make a career move that they think is going to be an improvement for themselves over their, over the remainder of their career. Ms. Stevens had actually resigned. Next, she, Courtney Stevens, she was a assistant in the HR department. She resigned to take a position with a corporate entity in St. John's County, which had offered her some additional benefits and salary that she felt, again, she needed to take advantage of. And then we had reservations from, excuse me, resignations from our planning director and our HR director. The, I'm in the process of, well, with regard to Ms. Becker's position, we had hired, you had authorized me to hire a Mercer Group with Ms. Higgins Botham, who has assisted us in the past in searching for and finding replacements for key personnel. She has been assisting and has suggested some names. I'm interviewing two people tomorrow. I'm also interviewing a third person tomorrow for either the HR or the finance director position. Without going into detail, I believe that the moves that are in process will serve to improve both the efficiency and the level of service of the city. And, and in with respect to the planning director's position, make us a bit more user-friendly. Although, as I said, they were the, they were resignations and not terminations. But we are working, we are working very diligently. Your staff is pitching in, working across lines and across job titles to try to deal with the backlog that exists in the planning department. In that regard, as I explained to you by email, we have made an agreement with Mr. Sammons, John Sammons, who recently retired from the city of Palatka, I mean, excuse me, county of Putnam, to come in and work with us on a two-day-a-week basis, beginning March eighth, to assist with our, our, our planning duties. Mr. Sammons has a long term with the county. He was recently called back into service after he retired to fill in for the planning director that the county lost to Clay County. And the county has now found a new planning director, and Mr. Sammons is going to come over and give us some assistance as we attempt to, to move forward. I think that'll be beneficial from a couple of different perspectives. As you know, right now, the county handles part of our duties with regard to building permits and inspections. And we handle other duties with regard to zoning and site plan review. With Mr. Sammons' knowledge of the personnel involved and the processes involved, it's my hope that we can clarify, maybe streamline, and maybe even improve some of those processes as we move forward in planning. So that's, that's a, I guess, a summation of, of that topic. As I said, we're all working very hard to, to, to eliminate the backlog that exists in the planning department and to clarify and resolve some issues that had arisen in the HR department.
Any questions from the commission? All right. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Chief Taylor.
Yes, sir. Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Griffith.
I will defer and let Ms. Tucker give you some more good news.
Good news is always something we want to hear.
Good evening. So, STAT has recently received notification that the Florida, the Florida Department of Emergency Management, through their HMGP grant program, will be awarding the city approximately three hundred and fifty thousand to address upgrades at two of the, oh, two of the lift stations that experienced trouble during Hurricane Irma.
Always good news. Appreciate that. And again, thank you guys for the good work. Mr. Cutright, top that.
Ah, I don't know if I can top that, Mayor, but I will give you my, my update brief on what we got going on. In culture, in culture arts, we are trying to do a soft opening with the St. John's River Center, starting on Tuesday, Tuesday of next week. Around the four days, four hours. And the recreation department will be doing a spring, spring. Uh, most of it can be different next.
You're breaking up, you're breaking up. We can't hear you. You're, you're break, you're breaking up really bad. Let me, let me come back to you when you get five G.
I'm sorry.
We're going to come back to you. Your, your connection is really bad. Ms. Becker.
Hi, Mayor. I don't have anything at this time or that, you know, together so that we have a smooth transition and I, it's a bittersweet move, but I appreciate all the nice sentiments that Mr. Holmes gave and look forward to making sure that the handoff is, goes well.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Cutright, let's try you one more time.
Can you hear me better now? I feel like I'm in a sprint commercial. But now, as I was saying, in culture arts, we open, we're doing a soft opening with the St. John's River Center, starting Tuesday. Hopefully, it'll run by four, five, Tuesday through Friday through the month of March, and then April, we, hopefully, if everything goes smoothly, we'll open up full-blown, running five days, five to six days a week. In recreation, we're doing a, a activity sports camp on March the fifteenth to the nineteenth. It's different activities such as baseball, golf, soccer, and flag football. It'll run from nine to two with two different programs going on at the same time. We have the golf from twelve to, and then nine to twelve will be the sport activities. You can find an app, or you can call, and we can give you more information if you need it. Code enforcement, I know that's everybody's big question. We're doing pretty good over the last several weeks since the, the code enforcement hearing. We have closed six cases that was just general weeds and grass, and then we have opened up five new cases. But we seem to be getting some compliance on those new cases because we are getting some movement through the ownership of the property, trying to get the buildings and, and places under compliance. Our next magistrate hearing will be on the eighteenth of March. Hopefully, we'll have six to ten cases for him to hear. Other than that, Mr. David Green and Aaron Hughes are doing a wonderful job in the code enforcement department. And hopefully, like, like Chief said, we need the community to be patient, but also to start calling in and letting us know what's going on in their community and help us kind of bring Palaca back to the beautiful city that I heard it used to be and it can be and will be. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one point to Mr. Borum, he had asked us to look into the possibility of having some form of ability of the public to call in and track cases. Mr. Griffith and I met with, and I think Mr. Cutright too, we did in fact confer with the I-Works representatives to determine what upgrades would be required in order for us to, to make those services available. And our initial, our initial lead is that it would be about a three thousand dollar upgrade to make that available. We are trying to, to clarify a couple of things in, in order so that we can, we can fully, I guess, address that picture with the commission to see if the commission wants to spend that money. But I will, we have not, we have not lost track of that, of that request. And we are, we are finishing up with the gathering of that information. We'll make a report at the next meeting.
Okay. It's always a good thing that we can get more, we can create more convenience for our citizens. Counsel. Counselor, how are you? We can't hear you, so I take it that you didn't have anything to say.
My mic is on. You can't hear me?
We hear you now.
Great. How are you doing?
We're wonderful. You have anything for us today?
No, sir.
Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Yule, you always make me feel like I'm getting ready to land.
Come on down.
Who am I missing? Ms. Krantz, you got anything for me?
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Can you, can you scroll through to make sure I didn't miss anybody?
There is no additional scrolling.
Okay. I've got everybody. My list is getting short. Let's go. Pastor Mulberry, you got anything for us today? Nothing from the pastor. Commissioner McCaskill. Commissioner Borum.
Nothing further, other than want to welcome our, our Valeria, Valeria Thomas as a permanent city manager. I mean, that's attorney here, so she's, that was in our agenda, so we voted on it tonight. So welcome and thank you for all you do for us.
Starting to set a trend.
That's all I have.
I think she's saying thank you, but we can't hear.
Thank you, Commissioner Borum.
Commissioner Jones.
Also would like to say congratulations. Also would like to say congratulations to Attorney Thomas on acquiring this position with the city permanently. And to Pastor Mulberry for being appointed and getting the position as chaplain for the city of Palaca. A comment I have is, I am also glad to be able to have a hundred percent attendance in person with this commission because it's my first time being here with everybody on the board. And I would like to also encourage our department heads to attend the meetings in person or at least show your face on the Zoom call. It's personable, and I think the public needs to see you because you make the decisions that goes on in the city. So we need to be able to put a face with the people who are in charge. And, and, and they could appreciate you as well if they see you out in public. I think that is important. Hopefully, we'll be able to get you guys in the meeting room to actually do your reports in person sometime in the near future as well. But again, thank you.
Commissioner Campbell. I'd like to say welcome to Attorney Thomas, as well as our new chaplain, who has proven himself to be, not only for our city, but for our community for so many years. So we thank you for being able to step up and serve with us in the capacity that you are moving forth as our in-house chaplain to staff. Thank you all for what you have done over the, just over the last couple of weeks, last couple of months. Even with our recent resignations, we will get through this as we have times before. So do not be discouraged, city of Palaca. Again, we will get through this. We have someone that we have that's been with us, and we trust him to lead us in the direction along with this commission. So fear not, we shall get through this.
Thank you, Commissioner. First off, I'd like to say we, we recently had a, the Florida League of Mayors, a candid conversation, which talked about mental health. I thank Chief for the report that he gave out. It talks about coping with mental health through the pandemics and how, what mayor's roles were during that situation. Step-by-step counseling, a new organization that's coming into Putnam County, working with the school district as well as various organizations. And they participated in our trunk-or-treat event as well. But Dr. Jones from that facility actually was the mental health professional that came on board. They did an excellent job. And they really talked about some of the coping mechanisms that everyone has. They also talked about the uptick in crime, the uptick in domestic violence, the uptick in violent crimes on a statewide and national level, and also the fact that being locked into pandemics from the standpoint of everything in your life changing creates instances of where people begin to behave as if they have PTSD. There are a lot of things that we miss when you start talking about having folks locked into their house or having to stay at home or live in fear on a regular basis. And also just the way that certain circumstances are. We've got seniors that have not really left home since March of last year because of, because they're in fear. We've got young people who've not been able to engage in activities for over a year when their daily walk of life was for them to be out and doing different things or even interacting with their peers. We've got working families that are now coming together more often than none. We've got folks in bad relationships that are now forced to be in the house with one another even more. And it's leading to more domestic violence, it's leading to more violent crime. And we've got people who are just acting deviantly because of what's going on in the circumstances. All of it causes for alerts, and it all causes for us to continually try to find creative ways to engage our citizens and to employ them in coping mechanisms. In the future, we're going to put forth a webinar, something that we've been talking about for the longest, where we start to address those issues in a town hall format so that people can ask questions, get some tools for coping. We can also hear some creative things. We're going to share the webinar that we recently had with the city so that you can get, you can use some of those ideas as well. And it talked about everything from the way that parents deal with the pandemic to the way that we deal with in the office place because it creates certain uncertainties that are there. And so those are all things that we're looking at. As it relates to the city of Palaca, we're no stranger to transition, but we are by far built for perseverance and built to deal with the hard times. So we, we definitely thank everyone who's, who recently resigned in whatever capacities they were in for their service to the city of Palaca. But again, the core remains very constant from this commission to our leadership in its various capacities. And we have, we have continually moved this community forward, making sure that we look out for the interests of everyone, including, you know, every, every, every citizen and every community and every walk of life. And we're going to continually do the things that we've done to try to move Palaca from eighteen fifty-three to twenty twenty-one and it further into the future. So those are things that we're looking at, you know, just to kind of give the commission an idea of what we're talking about. We've got businesses that are continually calling in and trying to get started. We've got more, we've got more individuals coming in, looking at opportunities to develop homes, to build homes, multiple homes, and create additional projects. And so there's a lot of building going on here all throughout Putnam County. And I think the secret is out that the gem of the St. John's River is alive. And so you're, if you're not catching it in so many ways, it means that you're not doing something right. So if there's nothing going on that kind of causes frustration sometimes, that means you're not doing anything right. Because when we're doing what we're supposed to do, there's always the devil or everyone else trying to come in and create obstacles for us. So I, I believe that the things that we go through, that we sometimes look at as obstacles, are nothing more than opportunities for us to be able to put in additional processes so that we can continually catapult. Because a lot of times, we miss the opportunity for our stumbling blocks to be our stepping stones. And I think in this community, we've seen that, we've leaped over many obstacles, and we continually move this community forward from the point of being almost bankrupt, from the point of being considered to be the only dying city. And now we're the city that everybody's trying to get to. If you didn't see the recent reports, in four years, the home values in this community have grown by one hundred and nine percent. We're becoming the what's happening city, and the only thing we have to do is continually put the policies. And the only thing we have to do is continually put the policies in place so that when developers come in here, they know what the rules are and they can go ahead and do the things that they want to do to engage in the projects. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to the future. I'm looking forward to the apartment complexes and the housing developments and the new businesses that have been vetted in Putnam County because they're going to come to the gem of the St. John's. And for any of them looking, you better get on board now because the train is moving very fast. We just had some investors come in, foreign investors looking at projects as well. And so it's just not folks who are in this region. We've got folks from all over the world that'll look, that have started looking at Palaca. It's been identified as a major rural community within this state and opportunities exist for them to come in and build. And so I'm excited about what we have and we're going to continually move those things forward. I'm excited about the coming opportunities to bring things forward as it relates to the potential of bringing the North Side Neighborhood Facility Center back in a place that was really, the core of our development is young people. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And the other thing is it's Black History Month. And in Black History Month, there are so many things for us to celebrate. John Henry Pop Lloyd, the grandfather of the Negro League. Major League Baseball has finally decided to take the stats of Negro League baseball players and put them in with the Major League players because they were better than most of the Major League players. And we now find them having an opportunity to be recognized in the same capacities. Mary McLeod Bethune, 1899 to 1903 Palaca Mission School, right here on St. John's Avenue, considered to be one of the top 100 Americans of all time. Her first college is right here in Palaca. And while we talk about many of these things that divide our community, she's a unifying factor, having gone around the country with Eleanor Roosevelt to fight for women's rights. While we're talking about change in ways in which we want to recognize history and people are fighting to maintain things that may be divisive, you can take one of the top 100 Americans and you can look at St. John's Avenue where her college was. Her record speaks for itself anywhere in this country. We should probably be looking at taking St. John's Avenue or some other street in this community and naming it after Mary McLeod Bethune because she's been a person who's contributed to the core of this country and she'll meet the criteria for anybody else that's there. We've got great Americans all over, but in Black History Month, there's so much history for us to celebrate. And we just need to make sure that we take time to teach our children about the wonderful things that happened, about Central Academy, about some of the other places in the community that we've had. I'm not looking at the clock because I got, because I got the hammer. But the bottom line is if you don't teach people where they come from, we talk about disproportionate resources on the North Side, but if we don't teach people where they come from and why they should be proud to be from where they are and what some of the great success stories are that have worn that purple and gold shirt, then we're missing it. Sometimes you got to let folks know what this history is. Black history is not taught in our school systems, but it needs to be taught in our households by everybody because it's just not for black folks. And at the end of the day, when we start to talk about the greats in this community, the Dr. James A. Long, when we start to talk about, you know, we, we talk about Dr. Brooks and Central Academy High School and Mary Lawson Brown Hospital. When we begin to talk about Johnny O'Brien and some of those guys that were first in law enforcement, we'll begin to talk about all the great things that came through this community, then people will understand why we're supposed to be powerful, why you walk with your head high and your shoulders up. And that's what this is all about. It doesn't matter. And I'll say it over and over again, we can build a riverfront up all day long. And if you build a beautiful gateway into a city of broken people, you'll still have a city of broken people. We've got to raise the floor in order to raise the ceiling. That's what's been the commitment to this commission. That's been the commitment by this staff and its leadership. And we're going to continually do that because the gem of the St. John's River is going to continue to shine. That's my message and I ring the bell for me. And so I'll entertain, I entertain a motion to adjourn.